Good evening, welcome to the Herndon Town Council Public Session, March 14th, 2017.
Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I am pleased to warmly welcome Girl Scout Service Units 51-9, 2365, and the cadets from the Herndon area, led by Service Unit Manager Liz Jones, who I've known for years. They're here this evening to honor Girl Scout Week and are going to join us for the flag ceremony.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Girl Scout Week is recognized as March 12th through March 18th nationally and internationally. Juliette Gordon Lowe officially registered the Girl Scouts organization's first members in Savannah, Georgia on March 12th, which serves as the official birthday of the Girl Scouts of America. This year is the 105th birthday of the Girl Scouts. Through Girl Scouts, millions of girls and women have learned skills that serve them not only in scouting, but also throughout their lives. Young people, such as the ones we have here tonight, will be the future leaders in our community, and we hope that you continue to stay involved, and we fully expect to see some of you ladies up here in just a few short years. So thank you for coming up here for the flag ceremony and for all that you do, and we're so glad you're here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bill McKenna is out of town on business and will not be present this evening. First on the agenda, we have a couple of sets of minutes up for approval. I'll ask for separate motions on each item. Is there a motion to approve the February 28th public hearing minutes?
Second.
Okay, was that motion made by Ms. Olem, seconded by Mr. Davidson? Is that what I saw? Okay. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the March 7th work session minutes?
Second.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Okay, I will abstain as I was not present for that part of the meeting. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and one abstention. Tonight, we have two presentations. First up is a proclamation to recognize Women's History Month, March 2017, and Councilmember Davidson has requested to read the proclamation. Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Town of Herndon proclamation recognizing Women's History Month, March 2017. In 1981, the National Women's History Project, an educational nonprofit organization that recognizes and celebrates the accomplishments of women, petitioned the United States Congress to declare National Women's History Week, which was celebrated for the next several years. Six years later, the National Women's History Project successfully positioned the Congress to expand the celebration of women's history to the month of March. From that point forward, March has been designated as Women's History Month across the country, to recognize the countless recorded and unrecorded contributions that women from every race and ethnic background have made to grow and strengthen our nation. As the Town of Herndon celebrates Women's History Month, we remember that throughout history, women have demonstrated outstanding leadership in the areas of business, government, law, science, medicine, the arts, education, and many other fields, and comprised a significant portion of the labor force, working both inside and outside of the home. Women have been instrumental during times of war, serving in our nation's armed forces to defend the United States and advance freedom, and have taken an important role in serving our communities, particularly through volunteerism, and in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions, including the Fort Knightly Club of Herndon. Therefore, the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim the month of March 2017 as Women's History Month in the Town of Herndon, together with this year's theme, honoring trailblazing women in labor and business, and commend the women in our community and throughout the nation for their invaluable contributions to our nation and its workforce. Further, in celebration of Women's History Month, the Mayor and the Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim the Fort Knightly Club of Herndon, one of the oldest women's clubs in Virginia, who have contributed to the betterment of the Herndon community since 1889, honor the Fort Knightly Club's volunteers, and highlight the important historical role the Fort Knightly Club has played in preserving and protecting Herndon's heritage. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Discussion on the proclamation. Anybody? Ms. Friedrichs.
I'm a proud member, a recent member, of the Herndon Fort Knightly Club. This is a group of women who support the community in so many ways. Every time I go to a meeting, I learn something new, and I commend you and us for all the work that the Fort Knightly Club does. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Ms. Baker. Sure. Yeah, I would second that. Certainly commend. We have so many great organizations, and certainly the Fort Knightly Club has a long history in town, and we appreciate your service and what you do to the town, for the town. Also, just want to acknowledge, you know, the fact that there's five out of seven councilmembers that are women on this board is really quite unusual, right? When we go to the Virginia Municipal League, we're an exception, but this is certainly not the rule. There are still plenty of opportunities for women and for, to advance equality, and have women be further represented, particularly in government. We could talk about Fortune 100 boards and those things as well, but certainly in government. I want to acknowledge Lisa Merkel, our first elected mayor. Certainly Carol Bruce was our mayor as well, after Tom Rust resigned, but our first elected mayor as a woman in 2012, and the fact that we still have less than 20% of our Congress is women. But again, I'm really proud to be on this council with a majority of women, but just acknowledging that that's definitely the exception, not the rule. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments on the proclamation. Ms. Olem.
And one of the things that the, excuse me, Fort Knightly Club does is they provide scholarships for our youngsters here, and I know my youngest received one. He always puts that very proudly on his resume. So keep up the good work with that. You do some wonderful things for the community.
Thank you. Other comments?
Well, I'm certainly glad to see so many members of the Fort Knightly Club with us here this evening. You know, it was established in 1889. Herndon was barely a town at that time. We were only 10 years old as a town, and to think that women didn't have the right to vote yet, and yet the women of Herndon got together and decided that they were going to make some things happen, and started the first library, public library, in Fairfax County, which is really quite a feat when you look back on that history. And the Herndon Fort Knightly Library that was built back in the early 90s, under the leadership of Mr. Rust and others, it is the only library branch in the county that has a name outside of just the location. It is the Herndon Fort Knightly Library, and I know that people before us worked very hard to make sure that you were recognized in the title of that library. So we're pleased to recognize Women's History Month, and I'd like to invite down the entire Town Council, the Town Manager, our Town Attorney, Delegate Boyzko, and Delegate Rust, if you'd like to join us, we would love to have you, and all of the members of the Fort Knightly Club that are here. I see Mary Berger, the President, and many
Thanks, Jeff, for those kinds of words. I'm Mary Berger, and I am President of the Herndon Fort Knightly, and I am honored to be here to accept this proclamation for our organization. We do start it with doing lots and lots of scholarships, and not only do we give to the ladies, we also give to the gentlemen. So I want you to know, we're an equal opportunity group. But I'm proud of our organization. We're hardworking little volunteers in the town, and we reach out and help many people. So thank you for having us.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a resolution expressing appreciation to Arthur A. Anseline, who is our Town Manager, and for his dedicated service to the town from February 1976 through March of 2017. We're pleased to recognize you for your years of service. We brought in the snowstorm just for Art. We didn't want him to get out of town without one last snow emergency, so that was brought in probably by our acting Town Managers, who I'd probably blame that on. Before we get started, I'll outline kind of the process of how we'll handle this. First, the council will read the resolution, and then I'll invite forward anyone in the audience that would like to come forward to say a few words and wish Art well. I'd like to recognize that lots of Art's families here this evening. Susan is here, and many of Art's sons and daughters are here. We have State Delegate Jennifer Boyzko is with us. Delegate and former Mayor Tom Rust and his wife Anne have joined us, and there were other councilmembers who were hoping to be here, and I'm looking out, and I don't, I see Steve Mitchell, but you weren't even on my list, but you're here. Former Councilman Steve Mitchell is here. I think the weather may have kept a couple of other people from making it. This evening Jenny Phipps is here representing Supervisor John Faust's office. They are having their board meeting this evening as well. So we thank all of you who made time to be here for Art this evening, and I will call on Councilmember Davidson to begin reading the resolution. Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Town of Herndon Resolution 17G34, to express appreciation to Arthur A. Anseline, Town Manager for dedicated service, February 1976 through March 2017. Whereas, with an illustrious career in local government, spanning more than 41 years at the Town of Herndon, Arthur A. Anseline, Town Manager, served as the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation for 31 years, and as the Town Manager for the past 10 years. And whereas, on February 2nd, 1976, Mr. Anseline was hired as the Director of Parks and Recreation for the Town of Herndon, where he led the agency to four national gold medal awards for excellence in parks and recreation management, the highest award presented in the industry, and...
And whereas, as Director of Parks and Recreation, he developed an array of community recreation programs and events, including the award-winning Herndon Festival, serving as its first Chair for 27 years, the Labor Day Festival, July 4th Celebration, Holiday Arts and Crafts Show, Turkey Trot 5K Race, Summer Concert Series, the Town Square Singers Musical Group, and more. And whereas, working to enhance the quality of life for Herndon citizens throughout his career, Mr. Anseline worked with the Mayor and Town Council on numerous projects, too many to list, but some of which include: the flagship Herndon Community Center and its three expansion phases, the indoor tennis center at Brady Park, incorporating the stage element into the Herndon Municipal Center design, the acquisition and development of seven town parks, in collaboration with Fairfax County and four others, Herndon Centennial Golf Course, Chestnut Grove Cemetery, Downtown Master Plan, Herndon Metro Station Area Plan and related projects, the Town's purchase of privately-owned land in Herndon's downtown to facilitate the downtown redevelopment project, various road and intersection improvement projects, and...
Whereas, under his leadership, the Herndon Police Department and the Department of Parks and Recreation attained and sustained national accreditation, achieved numerous awards from state associations, and the Town received the Virginia Municipal League's VML Achievement Award, and two VML Green Government Certifications. And whereas, Mr. Anseline has supported fiscally responsible solutions to complex challenges, such as the automation of the water meter reading system, modernization of refuse collection services, adoption of significant technological upgrades to the Town's website, the development of a Town App, and enterprise resource planning software, and...
Whereas, consistently committed to excellence, Mr. Anseline sustained financial stability for the Town by maintaining a AAA bond rating and preparing 10 award-winning balanced budgets, each attaining the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada's Distinguished Budget Award for Excellence. And whereas, Mr. Anseline, committed to the application of the highest standards in local government, was apparent through his involvement in several professional organizations, which include: the American Academy for Parks and Recreation Administration, the National Recreation and Parks Association Commission on Accreditation of Parks and Recreation Agencies, the International City County Management Association, and the Virginia Local Government Management Association, where he served on the Board of Directors, and...
Whereas, dedicated to many organizations in the Herndon community, Mr. Anseline is an integral part of the Herndon Rotary Club and the Herndon Optimist Club. He served on the Herndon Foundation for the Cultural Arts Board of Directors and the Herndon J.C.s. And whereas, in March 2017, Mr. Anseline will retire from his position as the Town of Herndon's Town Manager, having completed a distinguished career of more than 41 years of public service.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby express its deepest respect and appreciation to Arthur A. Anseline, Town Manager, for the loyal and dedicated service he so willingly provided to the citizens of the Town of Herndon, and thank him for his many years of service as a dedicated public servant and active citizen, the true embodiment of the Herndon spirit. Be it further resolved that the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby congratulate Mr. Anseline on the occasion of his retirement, wish him every success in the future, and a long, happy, fulfilling life here in Herndon. With that, I move approval of Resolution 17G34. Thank you. Discussion on the motion. Vice Mayor Baker?
Sure. I'll start. I know there's lots of folks in the audience who are going to have plenty of things to talk about regarding Art. It's really hard for me to imagine working at one place for 41 years. I was saying this to his children and Susan earlier during the reception. And just hearing at his retirement ceremony on Sunday, just the wealth of people from, you know, his various stages of career that came back to speak about his service and his accomplishments, and the funny stories, and the rigid flexibility, and all sorts of fun things we learned about Art. It's an impressive career. I was trying to think, I don't think I've worked for one place more than seven years. So to think about having 41 years in one place, it's just, it's really hard to imagine, and I think we'll see so much less of that going forward, given kind of the new work environment that folks have. But we are really, the Town has certainly benefited from your service here. I know he had one other job before Herndon, and that was in Martinsburg, West Virginia, right? And other than that, it's been Town of Herndon. So I've certainly appreciated working with you for the past two and a half years, and appreciate all your service to the Town. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Other discussion. Ms. Friedrichs followed by Ms. Olem.
I've known Art for several years now as a fellow Rotarian, and now the Town Manager, and now I'm preparing no Art as a retiree. Art, I think one of the best things you can say about a Town Manager is that the Town runs beautifully, and you have an amazing job. Your staff is miraculously well-prepared for every eventuality. They are kind and thorough and respectful of citizens, and I know that reflects on you. Thank you so much for your years of service to the Town. We're going to miss you a lot.
Ms. Olem.
My first introduction to Mr. Anseline was in 1990, going to the Herndon Recreation Center, where he was Director. And over the years, I've gotten to know him first, you know, as the Town Manager as well, and a fellow Rotarian. But the thing that I always remember every summer, especially now, is how he could put some kind of phone call in, so that when we had the Herndon Festival, we had wonderful weather. And he seems to have passed that on to Cindy Roder. So thanks for that, that all of our nonprofits that are out here, working, trying to raise money, do the other good things in town that they all do. We appreciate your keeping that weather going, and I'm sure you'll help us out in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you. Art, I think I met in 2000, when I got suckered onto being on the Herndon Festival Committee. And we spent many nights together with a great group of fans of the Herndon Festival. And when we were elected in 2010, it was my pleasure to work with you as a professional colleague on council. Me, you really, you embody the Herndon personality. I've always admired your style of calm leadership. The Herndon Festival, as was mentioned on Sunday, there's always some behind-the-scenes disaster going on, small, but you would never know it from how everyone runs. And that's very much like how things run in a municipal corner in the town. There's always something going on, but we've always got a handle on it. And so your hand at the wheel has been appreciated, respected, and will be missed. And like many other retirees from the Town of Herndon, we look forward to calling on you as a citizen. So we know where you live.
Don't screen your calls too well.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson.
Art, recently I went to the VML Institute down in Richmond, as you know, and one of the things that I picked up there was the average term for a Town Manager in Virginia is somewhere between two and three years. So 41 years, or 10 years as Town Manager, and 41 years' service total is certainly something to be proud of. As we all learned on Sunday, your fingerprints are all over town, and we've heard that several times. It certainly is true, something to be proud of. But even more than that, as I looked around the room on Sunday, just, it was amazing the number of people showed up, the number of people had personal stories to talk about, and your impact on their lives and on the Town is certainly something you should be proud of for the rest of your life. And I thank you for that.
Thank you. Well, Art, I didn't realize that you started on Groundhog Day in 1976, so hopefully it hasn't been quite like the movie, but it probably has its moments. I don't remember the first time I met you, Art. I've tried to rack my brain, but it had to probably be around 10 years ago, when you first became the Town Manager. And while that has certainly been a wild 10-year ride, I think that really Art's mark that's left on the Town is the Parks and Recreation Department and the Herndon Community Center. It's hard to imagine our Town without such a robust Parks and Rec Department, and I know that when you walked in the doors back in 1976, you probably never dreamed you'd still be here in 2017. But with such a record of service, and really left a mark on the Town that is partly, I think the Parks and Rec Department is what brings a lot of people into the Town who don't live here. It really is kind of a gateway in how a lot of people find about the Town. So it must feel great to sit back and be able to look and see so much, starting from probably a one or two-person department to what it has become today, and what I'm sure it will continue to grow into in the future. When someone said rigid flexibility, I noticed Susan laughed the hardest out there, so I'm sure she has some stories about that. You know, Art, Sunday was really a great, it was really a blessing to be a part of it, and see so many people who traveled so far, and from so far back in your career that made time to come and honor you. And I know that it was an emotional day for you, and we're glad you made it through. And I'm glad the snow held off enough so that more people were able to come this evening. So congratulations. We've still got a few days, so don't rush away just quite yet. But I do find that he's planning a big party, I think. It is St. Patrick's Day, the last day that you'll be on board, so I think we may know where to find him Friday evening. But truly, congratulations, and thank you for your partnership over the past several years. I've really enjoyed it. I will call the question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. I would like to invite down, I know there are several people in the audience here. First, I would like to invite down Delegate Jennifer Boyzko to say a few words. I think you have a presentation for us.
Thank you so much. It is my pleasure to say thanks amidst everyone else's accolades. When my husband and I and our young daughter moved here 21 years ago, it was the Herndon Festival that really inspired us to want to live in a town that had such a great community spirit, and the parks, the parks system here in town. But as I've gotten to work with you, not only through being the member of the House of Delegates, but also my work with Supervisor John Faust, I've really enjoyed the collaborative spirit that you bring to everything that you do, from, you know, working on bringing the new fire station into fruition, which we're getting ready to celebrate, to just making the community a better place. I think that's why so many of us enter into public service. You've been just a beacon of light, not only as your job, but you spend so much of your time outside of your job in working to make Herndon the wonderful place that it is. And it's my pleasure to say thank you to you. I've brought a commendation, and I wanted to present to you, and I wanted to let you know that not only did the House of Delegates sign this, but it was agreed to by the House of Delegates on February the 17th, but also by the Senate on February 22nd. And several of my colleagues signed on to it. Betsy Carr, Delegate Cole, Delegate Heretic, Delegate Hope, Delegate Krezak, Delegate Minchu from Leesburg, Delegate Plum from Reston, Delegate Rasul, Delegate Simon from Falls Church, and Delegate Tyler. And our Senate patrons, Senator Wexton, who represents us, but also Senator Eben, Senator Favola, and Janet Howell, who represented us for many years as well. So it is my pleasure on behalf of the Virginia General Assembly to present you with this commendation. Thank you so much for your service. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Delegate Rust.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of council. Tom and Anne Rust, 1020 Monroe Street. Every time I come down here, I go down the path of memories that I remember going, and I don't know if any of them are here. Maybe one, but I remember the night we went to the Fairfax County Library Board and asked for the library to be named the Fort Knightly Library. I think they felt sorry for us, because it had to be 110 degrees in that building, and for some reason, I've always remembered that. Well, I'm here tonight because Cindy Roder cut me off before I was finished. And I have another... And I have another 10 or 15 minutes, but...
Take all the time you need, sir.
But I'm not going to do that. I do want to again thank Art, and Ann and I have brought a small token for him that he can open now or open later at his desire. But it is for both he and Susan. It's not just for you, it's for the partnership that y'all had. And so that's the only reason I'm here. You wouldn't let me bring it Sunday. I wanted to bring it Sunday, but you wouldn't let me, so I have it here tonight. But I do want to leave Art with one piece, one sage piece of wisdom that those of us who have served in public before always remember. Art, you walk around town today, and people say, "Well, there's Mr. Anseline. How are you, Mr. Anseline? Good to see you, Mr. Anseline. Thank you so much for what you've done, Mr. Anseline." Three or four months from now, Art's going to be walking around town, and he's going to see somebody looking at him sort of quizzically and trying to figure out who he is. And finally, he's going to build up his courage, and he's going to come over and he's going to say, "Didn't you used to be Art Anseline?" Art, you'll always be our ultimate town manager. Thank you for your service. Susan, it's yours, too.
And we want to know what's in it.
(Laughter). I wrapped that, you can tell.
Wow, he's really going to open it. I'm so excited. Oh, it's not a puppy. Oh. That was lovely. Who else would like to come forward and say a few words about Art? Mr. Mitchell. For yourself, Mr. Anseline.
Steve Mitchell, 1291 Monroe Street. I'm here on behalf of myself, my wife, Wanda, and our entire family. And I'm not talking about the professional accolades or anything. I'm going to talk about Art as my friend. And Art, we've been friends for a long time, Susan, and our families. We've known each other since the kids were in elementary school and even kindergarten. So I look forward to, as I was telling Art earlier today, that after going Sunday, I walk around seeing all the history and stuff. I'm reflecting myself, just because I've been here the whole time. And I'm reflecting to see how far the town has actually come and how good the town is. And when we follow the vision by all the people at the times that have had visions and stayed on track. And Art has helped us keep on track. Rust has helped keep us on track. Y'all are keeping us on track. And we're going to move forward in the future, and this is going to be a better community. And it's thanks to people like Art. And 41 years is a long time. It's a lot of fun to walk around town and, for me, to see my name here and my name there. And I'm sure Tom is the same way. And we're going to have to put Art's name somewhere. But it's a true joy to call Art my true friend. And I look forward to spending some additional time skiing or whatever and moving on in our retirement lives with our families. And so I just want to say thank you, Art, for your 41 years of service. And I wish you all the best, and hopefully we can improve and go forward. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Who else would like to come forward? Yes, ma'am.
Uh-oh. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council members. I'm Barbara Lake, it's 935 Barton Oaks Place. Art? Art, congratulations on your retirement, buddy. We all know how you've worked as a town manager, and we know how much you really liked attending all those balloon events. We also know how much you really love sitting through all those hundreds of very exciting Town Council meetings each Tuesday night. It's to make a man's hair go gray. Yes, you've steered the town through many significant events as town manager, and I have really appreciated all your years of hard work. But to me, Art, when I think of all your achievements, I have to say, when it comes to the Parks and Rec Department, you're the man. Let's take a small trip back in time. When you were the director of Parks and Rec, back when you had a great mustache, back when you loved to wear those hot shorts, and back when the town barely paid you enough money to afford a decent suit. As some of you have recalled tonight, you and Susan came to Herndon from West Virginia as newlyweds in the 1970s, when you were still in your twenties. You were hired as Herndon's Community Services Coordinator and were given its kind of the corner of Town DPO. You were essentially the Parks and Rec Department before the department formally existed or even had that name. During that time period, the town had acquired grant and bond money to build recreation facilities, which would include the community center, Brady Park, the golf course, and Trailside Park. And after the Department of Parks and Rec was officially formed, you were named as its first director. You got your first employee, a secretary, who also doubled as the town's switchboard operator. Your initial program was called Summer Fun, and it was a success from the beginning in 1976, with waiting to get into those summer camps, which were then held in Bruin Park. Once your department was able to get under the roof of the new community center, you were able to expand your programs and staff. And just five years into history, the Herndon Parks and Rec Department was awarded the coveted National Recreation and Parks Association Gold Medal Award in 1981. I could go on and on about all the great programs and events that Parks and Rec has provided to the residents of Herndon over the years, and of course, the time will not allow that. I'll just say that I really appreciate your stewardship of the department in its early years, which now continues very successfully under Cindy Roder. Art, I'm very thankful that you chose to come to Herndon all those years ago. Herndon benefited from your key understanding that recreation improves the quality of people's lives. Thank you so much for all your service to the town, both as town manager and director of Parks and Recreation. I hope you have a very enjoyable, relaxing, and restful retirement. Thanks, Art.
Thank you, Barbara. Uh-oh, he's coming for you. I hope you don't feel you need to leave. She's perfect fine, unless you need to get out, which I understand. I've totally been there. So we are so pleased that he was here. Bye. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Cindy.
Mayor and members of council, I may look like Cindy Roder, the wicked timekeeper. However, at the moment, I'm Arna Randall, 33 of Long Island Avenue, Maryland.
You look great tonight, Art.
Mayor Merkel and members of the Town Council, I have always been a man of my word, but I feel that I am falling short of that today. I had RSVP'd to be in attendance this evening, but I must ask that you accept these words in my face. My absence is not entirely my fault. The town manager failed to send a DPW plow to my residence to clear the 80-mile trek to the HMC. With this work coming on his part, sincerely recommend that you suggest to him that it may be time for him to retire. Oops, that's already happened. Since asking Cindy to read these remarks, I will keep them to less than three minutes. This is wishful thinking. First of all, I must wish, or I wish to address Susan Anseline. It has been said that behind every good man stands a good woman. That is not only inaccurate in this case, but is also politically incorrect. Art and Susan, it should be, at the side of a good man stands a good woman. I guess you would call it Team Anseline. I've already had the opportunity at my somewhat longer than three minutes' worth of comments, so I will summarize with the following. We all know that Art Anseline can be quite a character, but let me tell you the type of character he is based upon my 40 years of observations. C, commitment. H, honesty. A, accountability. R, respect. A, attitude. C, courage. E, trust. E, ethics and integrity. And R, responsibility. Art, you have continued exemplified character in your 40-plus-year career and all of your normal life. I am proud of your accomplishments, proud that I was able to work with you on part of your journey, and I am proud to call you my friend. Congratulations on a job well done, Art. And then he called me a few minutes before the meeting started to add a PS. Now that Art is a civilian, I believe it is high time that Art is recognized at the Mayor's Volunteer Appreciation Night for his countless hours of selfless and dedicated service to the many organizations in the town that was above and beyond the purview of his office.
Well noted.
I will switch back hats and become myself. One thing that I think has not been acknowledged in all of the things that have been said about Art's career and what he's done is the number of employees and staff who have been a part of his team over all of these years. And in doing my Parks and Recreation-style math, not finance department math, that's well over 4,000 of us who have benefited from what Art did in the beginning to build this department and expanded to what it's become today. The opportunities that we've all had, and you saw many of them who came back from far and wide this past weekend to say hello, extremely meaningful to all of us in what he did to start the program and set us all on this path in this profession. So we thank you again for everything that you've done for us and wish you well.
Thank you. Who else would like to come forward? Mr. Ashton.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I rise representing the town staff and myself personally in the 20 years I spent with Art standing by his side. I was driving over here tonight, and I was playing back and had all the great speeches from Sunday, Delegate Rust and the others that took us a trip down memory lane, and I can attest to pretty much half of them for the 20 years I've been here. I was on the bike trip when he broke his wrist. That was an interesting time, because when I came here, I was just a young buck who didn't have rigid flexibility. He was just plain rigid. And Art and I used to butt heads a few times over those years. On that trip, Rob Stalzer and I shared a room, and Art and Jeff Fairfield shared a room. And he broke his wrist. He did that 12-mile climb up that mountain, which was just a brutal, brutal climb on that piece of, pardon the expression, crap bike you had with the big thick tires. And the next morning, or it might have been later that evening, Rob, knowing that Art and I've had our bouts back and forth, looked over at me and said, "Do you now get Anseline?" And I went, "Yeah." He is one nasious person. He's just fired up. He is to the nth degree. He's going to fight for what he believes in. And a new respect was born. And from that respect grew lessons learned over the years. I appreciate the leadership that you've given this organization. I appreciate everything you've done for me personally and professionally. I want to pause there and thank Susan and family for sharing Art with us. We do greatly appreciate it. It was a sacrifice on y'all's side, and we thank you from the bottom of our heart for sacrificing to us. As you move forward into retirement, I also want to thank you for the grace in which you've handled transition. The times that we've spent together the past few weeks will be memorable for me forever. I appreciate how you handled it. It shows that you truly, truly love this town in a depth that few, I think, really can really imagine. And I appreciate everything you've done for us as a staff, for me personally and professionally. And I wish you only the best as you move forward into your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to come forward? Ms. Berger.
I live at 630 Wood Street in downtown Herndon. I'm a native Herndonite. I was born here 79 years ago, and I have watched Herndon grow and grow and grow. I've also watched Art grow and many fights we had in recreation as citizens. But I want to commend Art more than anything else for the park, Haley Smith Park, for kids, my late uncle. I thank you for all you did, for all the rust might have done on that, for all Rick Thoson might have done, for all you people who have worked so diligently, giving these kids the greatest park in Herndon, probably in Fairfax County. I understand they even have public parks there now. That's wonderful. That's wonderful. But thank you of all the good things you've done. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and congratulate Art? Yes, sir.
Pass these down.
Jeff Anseline, 1102 Monroe Street. And I'm proud to say that's a Herndon address, and one of the reasons I'm back in this town is because of my father. So I could sit here and share many stories. But I think on Sunday was very interesting to me to hear those stories of his professional life, because we haven't had the opportunity to interact on that level. And what I learned is that we share many similarities, mainly our disdain for bureaucracy. So I share that with you, and my coworkers can appreciate that from you. But I think what I wanted to share today was just I wanted to thank you for so many things that you've done for me and Stephanie Gregg, obviously my mom. But it's interesting, you know, of all the things you've done, I don't think I realized until recently how important what the word "community" means. And Rob Stalzer talked about that you were a community builder. And I don't think I understood what that meant until I heard his words, and then I thought about that. And I think that's part of the reason why I'm back in the Town of Herndon, excuse me, is because of how important that "community" is and how that'll help shape the lives of all of the Americans in this country and where we are today, and how important it is that we all, you know, share in what the word "community" means and how we treat our citizens. And I will always, you know, remember that. And it'll be an important part of my life and an important part of my daughter, who's gone, and my baby to come. Pass her bedtime. She's a little oldish this time of night. But it's such an important thing, and I think we don't, not enough of us understand what "community" means. And you've instilled that in all of us. You've instilled that in this town. You've made this town a better place. You've made this town a better place for generations to come. And it's a place that I'm proud to call home. So thank you.
Would anyone else like to come forward? Hard to follow that. Well, I appreciate each and every one of you who've been here tonight, and I really love what you just said about community. I think that is so true about your father and about many people in this room. And it's taken a community to take Herndon to where it is today and where it will be going forward. And we appreciate you giving us so many years of your dad's life for the town. And we're going to invite everybody forward for the presentation, and then, Art, I'm sure you'd like to say a few words, or as many words as you would like. You've got 40 years to cover. So I would like to invite down Art's family, all of the Town Council and the Town Attorney. We have town staff here, many members of the management team, Delegate Rust, Delegate Boiskow, anyone in the audience that would like to come down for the presentation, we would welcome you to join us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will take the opportunity to speak from up here, and I can face the audience as well, too. There's good news and bad news here. The good news is I really don't have any prepared marks. The bad news is I don't have any prepared marks. Yeah, we did make a few comments on Sunday, and it was a great event to celebrate my retirement, and I certainly give my thank you to the mayor and council for hosting such a wonderful event for myself and my family and celebrating my career here in the town. Certainly, as a reflect back on forty-two years, certainly, I don't know that I ever could say that I had a plan of going to stay in Herndon for forty-two years, but I think that speaks highly of Herndon, because it has been a great community and it will continue to be a great community with the leadership of folks such as Tom Rust and this council and previous councils that have all worked to build and make Herndon a better place. And it's the passion that we've had a lot of people with in our community that have had that drive and interest to see the community just grow. You know, I mentioned several names in passing on Sunday, you know, folks like Haley Smith, who was so active in the sports programs and started soccer in this community that, you know, people may not know who Haley Smith was today, but he was certainly played a tremendous role in that. Vic Harmon, who worked with then-Mayor Rust to work to get the community center and to seek Fairfax County grants, and the number of nights that they tromped down to the Fairfax County Governmental Center with, you know, groups of people to really work to get block grants to build the community center. You know, there was a lot of citizens throughout my career that were actively engaged that wanted to see Herndon become better. Certainly, you know, people talk about my fingerprints being on things, but, you know, we had a lot of people's fingerprints on things, and it's that collaboration within the community that made it all work and wanted to see the town to be a better place. And certainly, I'm proud and humbled to have been a part of that over my career, and certainly look forward to the opportunity in the future to how I can become engaged in the town to continue to make Herndon a better place, or better than as we continue to grow and to foster the sense of community that we all have come to love the most about the town of Herndon. And I certainly want to, again, thank my management team, and that's changed over the years, and all the people that we've worked with to, and all the battles and fights that we have over this and that and the things that we worked to get success on. And it takes that, that we do it in the spirit of friendship, and we do it in the spirit of collaboration, to knowing that we all have give and takes to do what we need to do to get to that end result. But I truly thank you, the mayor and council, again, and thank you.
Thank you, Art. It is time for the comments portion of the agenda. I'm going to give Art a minute, and I'll go ahead and do council comments first and come back to the manager if that works for everyone. So, Mr. Davidson, did you have any comments?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. In remembrance or observance of Women's History Month, I want to remind everybody that at the Warrenton Airport this year again, we will be celebrating Women Can Fly Day. It is a day when women are encouraged to come to the airport. There will be FAA talking about what it takes to learn to fly. There'll be free flights. There'll be a lot of women pilots there to talk to young girls about what the careers are that are possible in flying. So I wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you. Just wanted to give a shout out to our fabulous DPW. Once again, the town was cleared in record time. They were clearing the sidewalks, and we were able to get out around lunchtime today, and the streets look really great. So I know the guys and the gals worked around the clock, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Friedrichs.
I just want to remind everyone again that scholarships are available from the council, what was the Council for the Arts, from Arts Herndon, so please go to our website, artsherndon.com. Also, the Herndon Fortnightly Club is, has a scholarship available, and Rotary is getting ready to do its scholarship. So it's scholarship season. Don't forget to apply.
Thank you, Ms. Olem.
I concur with the council members' remarks on DPW. And while I was out shoveling my driveway, the man, the young man that lives next door to me came over and said, "No, let me do that for you." And he wouldn't let me pay. So there's just so many nice people out there. And if you're like me, you know that the big trash pickup is coming soon. So start getting your stuff together, because the week of April 3rd through 7th on your trash day, you can put anything you want out there except hazardous waste-type products. But that's always one of my favorite days in the spring and in the fall, that DPW and the town provide that service.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
I am thankful today that I live in Herndon, my adopted hometown, as opposed to my other hometown, my actual hometown, where my dad called and they had thirty inches of snow and counting. It was still snowing when I talked to him. I said it's payback from last year when we got that huge dump of snow and they had nothing. So happy not to live in Endicott, New York today and every day. Also want to acknowledge, I'm really honored, Herndon Middle School has asked me to speak. Actually, they asked the mayor, and I get to speak on March 31st about women in leadership. So, again, just echoing those comments from Women Leadership Month, Herndon is the exception, not the rule. I love being able to speak about that, both my, sort of my day job as a sales director in a technology company, as a person that's, that there's five out of seven women, as there's a female chief of police, there's a female town manager, or, excuse me, town attorney, maybe town manager, who knows? We've got options.
Just when you think you know someone, forty-one years.
Equal opportunity, I promise. Equal opportunity. But it is, it's very exciting. So I am really looking forward to being able to speak to that group, especially as a former middle school teacher. I taught middle school math, so to speak to that group is really an honor for me. So that's on March 31st. Thanks.
Great, thank you. I did want to mention that Herndon has earned the Tree City USA Award once again for the twenty-eighth consecutive year, and that our Kids Trout Fishing Derby has been rescheduled. It's the Fourteenth Annual Kids Trout Fishing Derby. It will now be held on Saturday, March 25th from 8:00 a.m., and starting at 8:00 a.m., and it's behind the Herndon Police Department, and is open for kids ages two through fifteen. And I wanted to give a shout out to our DPW as well. We thought we were going to get away with no snow, and sure enough, we had the March surprise, but our crews were working around the clock. Even Channel Four actually had running across the bottom of the television screen today that trash pickup was still happening in Herndon on Tuesday, even though with the snow. So, go DPW, and I was pleased that somehow they figured that out. So, thank you, and hopefully, this is it for a while. So appreciate all your hard work. Mr. Anseline, you have any comments for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Just as a follow-up to your one comment regarding Arbor Day, I do want to congratulate the community development staff, John Dazinski in particular, and public work staff, Bob Boxer, Parks and Rec, all the departments that contribute to the town, continuing to receive the Arbor Day Foundation Award for the town of Herndon. I think we're in about probably year twenty-seven or twenty-eight, but it is climbing up there in just the commitment of the town staff for that. I'd also like to ask Bill Ashton, the acting town manager, to step up and to please introduce our new finance director for the town, who's with us tonight. And so I'll let Bill do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'd like to introduce Jenny Tripoli, our new finance director. She comes to us from the city of Fairfax, where she had a six-year distinguished career over there. Before that, she came from the private sector, some really good private sector experience. But we were glad that she stepped up and threw her resume in the ring, and she passed muster, so here she is, and welcome.
Welcome. We're glad to have you onboard. Did you want to say a few words? You certainly don't have to. I don't want to put you on the spot. You have to commend a finance director for jumping into the job right in the middle of budget season. So, welcome aboard, and we'll get started right away. It's very nice to meet you this evening. Thank you. This is time for comments from the audience. This is a portion of the agenda, and you can speak on any item that's not listed as a public hearing item, which is pretty easy since we don't have a public hearing item this evening. You have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, and when the red light comes on, please wrap up. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Scott Tilton. I live at 884 Station Street. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. My name is Scott Tilton. I'm on the board of the Herndon Historical Society. I'm speaking on their behalf tonight regarding the future of the historic home in Runnymede Park, also known as Carol House or Carol Cabin. As you may know, the original portion of that structure is a stone house that was built by James Hawkins around a hundred years ago. While the brick and cinder block portions have histories of their own, the original stone house is of the greatest significance and therefore the most deserving of preservation and protection. With that in mind, the board of the Herndon Historical Society unanimously requests that you save the old stone portion of the house. It's important to note that the society is recommending limiting preservation to just the stone portion, and that the society is not suggesting a full restoration and/or renovation at this time. In addition, it could be a phased preservation effort. For example, the primary objective should be to ensure that the integrity of the structure is sound, making any necessary roof and masonry repairs. Once that has been completed, other efforts to preserve and protect the structure could be pursued at a later date and time as budgets permit. The original stone house is a special piece of Herndon's history, unique in its design, built with stone gathered from the surrounding area and resting in its original untainted habitat. These elements alone make it worthy of preservation. However, the old stone house also has the potential to provide meaningful educational opportunities to Herndon's residents and its visitors. Be it a window into the past, a literal window to the inside of the house showcasing what life was like at the turn of the century, or it is a living museum, onsite reenactors, and guided tours, the old stone house provides a unique educational opportunity that cannot be found elsewhere in Herndon. Please note that providing such services would not have to be an everyday occurrence, but rather reserved for special occasions. This is also the case for other popular historic Herndon landmarks, such as the Caboose and the frying pan meeting house. If this opportunity is pursued, the society would be happy to partner with town or Runnymede Park to support and promote such activities. In addition, the Historical Society regularly hosts scout troops and school groups for private tours of the Depot Museum and the Caboose. This service could be expanded to the old stone house, thereby further enhancing educational opportunities for Herndon's children. Lastly, the society recommends installing a historic marquee at the site. Doing so would ensure that everyone who passes by the old stone house would have an opportunity to learn more about its place in Herndon's history, regardless of when they visit. The old stone Hawkins Carol House is an important piece of our heritage and one that the Herndon Historical Society feels strongly about preserving. We ask that you take action to protect this piece of history accordingly. Please note that a formal written statement from the Historical Society is also forthcoming. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on any item? Okay, thank you very much. Well, that brings us just to our consent agenda, which includes items eight through ten listed on tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Madam Mayor, seeing no other business, I move we adjourn.
Second. Discussion on the motion. I just got a very excited text from my twelve-and-a-half-year-old that school's starting two hours late tomorrow, so everybody enjoy your evenings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And we stand adjourned at 8:07 p.m.